Good evening. It's 6:04. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. Would you all please rise and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Ms. Hunter, would we please call the roll?
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Chair Akini.
Here.
Commissioner Lepper.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Okay. Next is closed session reports, of which we have none. And moving on to item four is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Friend.
Second.
Second from Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes 4-0. Next is our consent calendar. These items are considered routine enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or unless any member of the commission's staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. And on our consent calendar tonight, we have the approval of the minutes from our last planning commission meeting on January 7th. So you want to pull the minutes? Okay.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt from Mr. Friend. Can I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lepper, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes 4-0. We did not pull anything from the consent calendar, so at this time we'll move on to item seven. This is items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. State law prohibits the commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda, except by special action of the planning commission under specified circumstances. So at this time, we open it up to the public for public comment. We do have a three-minute time limit to anyone who wants to address this, but if anyone in the audience would like to do so, this is, okay, seeing none. We will move on to number eight, which is written communications on non-agenda items. And we-
We have none.
We don't have any of those. We don't have any presentations or workshops, so we'll move on to environmental assessments and public hearings. First is a site plan review for Burning Barrel for exterior lights and heaters. And I'll turn this over to Ms. Hunter for the staff report.
Thank you. So the subject parcel, 640 Main Street, previously came before the commission on December 6th, 2022, for the establishment of Burning Barrel Brewing and Spirits, which opened its doors in late 2024. This application includes a modification to the previously approved elevations, including the addition of two radiant patio heaters and LED string lighting to serve the outdoor seating area on the east side of the building. The proposed LED bulb string lights outline the awning above the outdoor seating area and provide illumination for patrons. It is the opinion of staff that the market lights will provide ambiance to the side elevation of the eating and drinking establishment and do not create a nuisance to the neighboring properties or a safety hazard to drivers along Main Street. Additionally, the lighting shall be energy efficient, on a timer to be off between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., dimmable, and provide an element of safety to the sidewalk for pedestrians and customers, especially as the outdoor dining area is adjacent to the parking lot driveway and Main Street. Likewise, the addition of the two outdoor heaters results in a minimal modification to the eastern elevation of Burning Barrel and provide heat to the outdoor dining space and patrons of the establishment. Overall, it is the opinion of staff that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, community design element, the city's site plan review, and exterior lighting ordinances, and the development guide. Staff recommend that the planning commission make the findings in support of the SPR request, including that the request is exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15301, and conditionally approve SPR 15-04-r2 based on the project information and findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Very clear and concise as far as what the request is. Mr. Friend, do you have a question of staff?
I do have a question. And it's in both the staff report as well as in the large architectural document. And it might just be a carryover, but it indicates, let me get the language exactly, proposed, let's see, proposed addition. If you look on bottom page three in that figure, and you look on the east side of the building, it says proposed addition. It's also in the plans. Is that just a carryover from the previous application?
Yes, I believe-
There's nothing else new, right?
These were the plans that were approved back in '22, and they have had slight modifications to show the elevation-
Right. Okay. I mean, I know the properties. I didn't bother to go look to double check to see if this was already there, so I probably could have done that, but just to make sure something didn't get missed and it wasn't discussed. And then I note, and I'm just going to assume that they're just so incredibly busy and tired, that in the letter they submitted, they were going to put the propane heaters on the western side of the building. That probably won't work very well going on the eastern side. So anyway, cut that. But it's correct on the staff report. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions about the report? Okay. Thank you. At this time, we asked the applicant if he is present. Is Mr. Alexander here tonight or a representative for the, oh, if you'd like to step up to the podium? And officially, you can present your project to us if you like, or in the, you know, interest of time, if you just want to add something to the staff report or to what you've already submitted. We appreciate it. And are you Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. And please speak into the microphone. Thank you for coming down here and take time. It's adjustable. You can lift it up to you.
It's pretty cut and dry. The additions are pretty small. The lighting is going to be mimicking the current string lights that go through Main Street from about the courthouse to the bell tower. We're going to get the same type to keep consistency. One of the biggest complaints so far is the lack of patio heaters for our patio. Instead of having portable ones that we'd have to bring inside and constantly refill and have the risk of people touching them, we're deciding to go with industrial-grade heaters nine feet above the level of our patio to avoid anyone touching them. They're wirelessly controlled. Only the staff has access to turn them on, variable setting. And so, yeah, it's just a good way to provide better ambiance to the customers in a safe and efficient way. And they're only about 18 inches by, I think, 48 inches, and there's just two of them. So.
Yeah. You know, it's a very thoughtful addition to your project already. I appreciate you tying in with the existing lights that we already have for downtown. And also, I like the safety aspects of these heaters up on the wall. You know, I haven't seen anyone have an accident, but, right, they seem top-heavy. They're problematic. And then also, it sounds like it'd be easy for your crew, your staff, to respond to someone, one of your customers, you know, a little cold out there. You can turn them on, demand. So, thanks.
Yeah.
And we appreciate it. Very thorough submittal, too. Mr. Friend, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick note, and we do this routinely, Duncan. Good to see you. The timer on the lights, right, 6:00 a.m. to, or 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And actually, the real issue is the 11:00 p.m. They go off at 11:00 p.m. What time you turn them on the next day is kind of up to you. You're probably not going to turn them on at 6:00 a.m. or have a timer that turns them on at 6:00 a.m. You can if you want, but just so you know that you're not expected to. You know how the wording is. So the main thing is that they go off at 11:00.
Yeah. So right now, all of the exterior emergency lights, building sign, all lights are only on from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. We close the latest, Friday, Saturdays, at 10, leaving the lights on to let my staff get out safely. And then it's already on a approved timer that shuts off all lights at 11:00 p.m.
Okay. Great. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I was going to ask you about the optional heat shield that goes above the heaters. It's described in the brochure from Sunstar. Will you be using those for yours heaters?
The heat shield?
Yes.
Yeah. So there's a few variations of these heaters. They can be wall-mounted. They can be ceiling-mounted on a patio structure. So ours are going to have brackets that stick off the wall and angled at a 45-degree angle down. And because of the height off of the base or the top level of the patio, per the manufacturer's guidelines, there's no risk of injury or anything like that, having them at the recommended eight to 11 feet elevation installed for commercial projects.
You will have them or won't have them?
To be honest, in front of me, I don't know specifically what you're referring to.
It's on the front of the brochure from Sunstar, and it has an illustration down at the bottom. It says, "An optional heat shield can be installed to reduce the clearance above the heater." So if, for example, you had bird's nesting or anything that's flammable that came on top of it, this is something that would protect fire and protect the-
Oh, okay.
Customers. That's what I'm referring to.
Could I just see what, I submitted about five or six weeks ago, so.
Sure.
So where it's being installed on the wall, it's masonry building that just goes up to our gutters. The gutters have gutter guards, and then it's the slope roof. I don't foresee there being any bird's nest or anything that could attach to a masonry wall. It's about 18 inches from the top part of where the heater is going to be installed to the gutter line that has gutter guards to prevent-
I can't imagine a bird wanting to nest there. I'm just giving an illustration.
Oh, yeah.
Any kind of things like leaves that come on it, or, you know, someone's flying a kite. You never know.
Right.
From the illustration about your building, I didn't see any protection from the design that would protect it from something falling on top of the hot material.
So these heaters are going to be angled, not horizontally mounted, but 45-degree down at an angle. So anything that would fall on it wouldn't be subjected to, with the actual heating service, it would be falling onto the housing. If you've seen our place, we do a very good job of keeping everything very clean, the parking lot, the inside, the outside of the building. Everything is very well-maintained at all of our businesses. I don't foresee there being an issue. If the issue arrives, I can install them if that makes everything, you know, better in your eyes. But, yeah, we're pretty on top of maintenance in all aspects of our building.
Can I answer the question? Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much for taking time to come down and answer our questions. And please have a seat. Would anyone in the audience like to address the planning commission about this project that's before us? Okay. Seeing no one stepping up to the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing part of this site plan review and bring it back to the commission for action. You know, it's very straightforward what they're requesting. I think it's a great improvement to their site. Any other comments? Or should we just go ahead and?
I'll just add, my comments were addressed in the conversation, so I thought the heater height was appropriate. So that was not a concern for me. And the other question I had was fire safety. But in looking at it, I agreed with myself as I was evaluating it. Okay, it's angled down. It would really have to, like, be something up there. So I had the same concerns, just with it being open there and a little wooded, but it doesn't seem like a, it's not like an open pit or flame, or in the facing down, I think, will resolve those issues for me. And I understand what you're saying about the heat shield, but I think for this one, it looks like it's made more to protect the wall than the heater. But I do, I mean, that was a concern of mine, too, about the fire safety, but it sounds like it's addressed and covered. So I had no other questions. I think it's a great project and a great place.
Anyone, oh.
I'd move, I'd happy to move the project, and then we can have some additional discussion, maybe.
Make a motion?
I'm going to go ahead and move that we approved the request SPR 15-04-r2 for Burning Barrel exterior lights and heaters, with the findings as listed on page five of the staff report, Roman numeral one, one through five, and then Roman numeral two with the conditions as specified. Let's see, there is an attachment for the conditions, attachment one, as listed. I'm not going to read through all of them. I think they're spelled out here in the document.
Very good.
I'll second.
And a second from Ms. Lepper. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah. And then I just wanted to add a couple of things. I think the lighting and what you've chosen for the lighting is fantastic. And what I love, what I like so much about it is you went to tie it in with the courthouse to, like, CNI, it's like you said. And as you've heard me say, I really would like to see more lighting going up that part of Main Street all the way, you know, to Mosquito, and we have Diablo, I think, there at the end. I think the Independent will actually benefit from this. I think it helps just kind of the whole area. So it's really a good choice. So I'm really happy to see it. And then the heaters, yes, we do need heaters when it's cold. The spirits will only keep you so warm. We got to keep it safe, keep it warm and safe. So I think it's great.
That vibrant spot downtown across from the Independent, and as people can use the outdoor space during the cold weather, even more so. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Friend.
Aye.
Chair Akini.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
All right. 4-0. Congratulations. There is a 10-day appeal for, a period for any action taken by the planning commission, but it's very straightforward and I think a great project. Again, thank you for coming down here and talking to us, and good luck. Next up is another site plan review. This is a master sign plan for a location at 680 Placerville Drive. The property owner applicant is Starburst Properties LLC. Representative is Stephen Bailey. And I'll turn it over to you again, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So a master sign plan is required for properties that have more than two non-residential units or for those wishing to deviate from the general regulations of the city's sign ordinance. The subject application, SPR 24-08, is a request for a master sign plan for 680 Placerville Drive, including the addition of wall signage to the northern elevation for the law office and massage parlor, and approval of the topmost signs on the pole sign. Regarding the pole sign, staff completed a review of the parcel's history with respect to signage detailed on pages two and three of the staff report. Based on a review of city records, the pole sign base and pole sign cabinets, numbers five, six, and seven, which are identified on page five, figure four, were permitted under building permits in 1982 and 1985. The originally approved sign is shown on the left in figure two on page three of the staff report. It is unclear when the topmost sign cabinet, identified as sign four, and the time and temperature sign, sign eight, were installed. However, based on a review of Google Maps or images, these signs appear to date back to 2008. It is the intent of the master sign plan to permit these top two signs. It should be noted that the subject property relies heavily on the advertisement provided by the pole sign, which is designed to attract the attention of passing drivers. The front or northern elevation of the building is often shaded, and signage along the wall would not be visible to passing vehicles. Regarding the proposed wall signage, the application includes a total of three wall signs, including one illuminated open sign, one illuminated massage sign, and one aluminum, non-illuminated sign. As previously described, the parcel heavily relies on the pole sign for advertising. As such, wall signs for the parcel would act more as directional signage. Staff recommends that the illuminated massage sign not be approved as proposed, and that the signage for both commercial units have a consistent theme, material, and location on the wall. It is the opinion of staff that the addition of non-illuminated wall signage not exceeding three square feet each shall provide adequate advertising and direction for each unit. Another option, which isn't described in the staff report, is that should the property owner prefer, the wall signs could be capped in size to no greater than two square feet each and provide the name, address, and profession for each unit. They would then be classified as exempt signage and would not require a sign permit or count towards overall aggregate sign area. Regarding the illuminated open sign, the city's sign ordinance does not specifically provide guidance on placement, size, et cetera. Staff interpretation of the sign regulations for open signs is that they fall within the category of exempt signage when located within a window, not exceeding 25% cover in each pane, and when not flashing. However, there are instances throughout the city where open signs are installed along walls. Staff's analysis in the staff report assumes that the open sign is exempt. However, the planning commission has the discretion to disagree with staff's assessment. Overall, staff recommends that the planning commission make the findings in support of the SPR request, including that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15301, and conditionally approve SPR 24-08 as amended by staff based on the project information and findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. This was, I worked on this sign package quite a bit, you know, the fact that it's existed for so long, and then trying to make sure I was clear on your staff's recommendations. So I just want to make sure that I am clear that the, what is now an illuminated sign that reads massage, 2.7 by 1.14 feet, it's staff's opinion that an aluminum sign of the same dimensions be used, and one that looks like what reads Bailey &amp; Romero Law, Starburst Properties, as we see on page four. So make those two signs the same style and material.
Yes. Same size, material, and relatively cohesive location on the wall.
And then the open sign would, could also be on the wall, or is it in a window?
There are no windows on this elevation, and so it would be on the wall. And so staff's analysis identified the open sign as exempt. However, our code section doesn't necessarily speak to that, and so it is up to the planning commission's discretion.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. It is quite a bit more aggregate sign area than regulations would allow, but that's mostly in part because we're looking at two sides of the sign so that people eastbound and westbound can see the sign and know that what's available down, because the building is, actually, the offices are below grid, a little hard to see. Okay. Anyone else have a question for staff?
Yeah. You know how much I like your staff reports and how crystal clear I think they are, but I was and am still kind of befuddled on this one, to be honest with you. I'm going to start with on figure four on page five. So this really, this confused me. I'm sure you can clear it up quickly. On the left-hand side, I think, is kind of a depiction of what we have now. That's, and then, but I don't understand the figure to the right of it that has in it Plastical Medical Center and Occupational Testing, which I assume was just by way of example you chose that.
It is an example. So on the left of figure four is a drawing, not scaled, provided in the applicant's application.
Okay.
If you refer to figure two on page three, you can actually see a picture of what the sign looks like.
Sure. Correct. All right.
And so on the right in figure four, that's just an example to show the sign cabinet orientation.
Okay. All right. I think I get that. So where the med center was, we'd have put in the massage, Bailey &amp; Romero goes where Bailey &amp; Romero is. And then the blue area below that, I guess what I'm confused with is, am I looking at it from the other direction? So the picture on page three, figure two, I'm looking at it from the west. And then on page five, is that a depiction looking at it from the east?
That is correct.
Ah, okay. I wonder why. I know I was struggling with that. Okay. So that's what their rendition is, but staff is saying, look, the top cabinet, staff doesn't recommend approving that because, go ahead.
Oh, no. Staff is recommending approval of-
Oh.
-the time and temperature sign and the top cabinet that currently has the massage sign.
Oh, I thought you were recommending that go away. See, I took that-
Apologies.
All right, for whatever, that's just my bad.
The illuminated wall sign that says massage is what-
Oh, got, okay. So that would be number two. And on page four, number two. And then number three is okay, right? The aluminum sign. And that's, that's really not a sign, right? That's almost like identifying, you know, Dr. So-and-so is in behind this door, and then they could do one on the other door, right?
The proposed sign and the existing sign for the law office in Starburst LLC is actually what we would consider an exempt sign.
Okay. And so the other business, the massage business, could do something similar if they wanted, and it would be an exempt sign?
Yes. And staff was including a recommendation to up to three square feet.
Okay.
But that is-
And you're not, you're not suggesting they have to be at the exact same height and location, or was that staff's preference? I kind of-
I think for the pedestrian orientation, once you're on the ground, it would-
Be better?
Be better to have them placed logically.
And if you're going to have to do one, you might as well put it in the same. Okay, I get that. And then we're going to, we're going to give them a pass on the open? Okay. All right. I'm good with that. Thanks for clarifying that. Normally, don't have to work so hard on reports.
Any other questions for staff about the report?
I was just going to ask you about the calculations for square footage. Does that include the clock, or is that separate?
Yes, the time and temp is included. You can see on table one on page five, that is two feet by four feet. So we do, we do have dimensions included for that.
Okay. But do your rules normally include the clock, or is that exempt?
No, it's not exempt. It does require-
Okay. And then part of it, as it is now, is connected to the roof, presumably because of electrical connections. Does that count as a roof sign or ground sign?
No. In this case, we would consider it part of the pole sign.
And that would remain the connection on that side to the roof?
Let me take a look at the picture. I'm not sure I know what you mean. Oh, I see. There's a bar that does connect to the roof. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure.
I don't know if it's for support or if it's for electrification or both.
Yeah. In this instance, we would not consider this to be a roof sign.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions?
You noodled through, but I had some.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much, Kristin, for answering all our questions. At this time, is Mr. Bailey or a representative here in the, oh, hello. If you would, please step up to the podium and if you would give your name for the record. And we, this is the time reserved for you to present the project, or if there's anything you'd like to emphasize about the project to us, and we may have some questions for you. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Lynn Cav, and I'm an employee of Mr. Bailey's. And he had to go to LA for a court hearing for a client tomorrow, so he asked me to show up. So all he really wanted to convey was that he wants to be in compliance with whatever the city decides is agreeable and legal. One thing he did mention to me was that the client with the massage sign is out of the country for a month, so he didn't really know what timeframe we were going to be looking at to become compliant- at to become compliant. So he'd like to, you know, be able to work with that issue, but other than that, he, he just wants to do what the city recommends.
Oh, there, that's great. Great to hear. You know, I had one question of the, looking at figure two in our staff report, I don't know if you have that in front of you, but it's the, the old line drawing. And I think I remember once upon a time in those circular holes, there were wooden wheels. So just getting rid of that hole.
I see that. I saw, I saw Saxton. Do you remember Trent Saxton?
Right.
So I think, I'm trying to remember too. There probably was.
They've, I, I really can't remember.
I can't remember.
If I'm, because I saw the line drawing or if I actually saw those wheels in there, but.
Yeah, I think there were. I think you're right.
But you're, you're moving a slightly different design, I guess. You're not intending to replace, find a couple wagon wheels and pop them in there.
No, no, I think it's only the, the issue with the signs, and he just wants them to be compliant with whatever the city deems is the best way to go.
Okay. Good. Anyone else have a question for the representative?
They'll be communicating.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, that's all from us. Yeah, have a seat. Would anyone else?
It's okay.
Did you have a?
I'm just curious about, and it could be the staff, but when we talk about there were no records going back to whether this was.
Okay. Let's get to that in a moment. Right now, I'd like to see if there's anyone here in the audience that'd like to address the commission on this project. Okay, seeing no one, I'll, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the commission, so.
I'm sorry. I yelled.
It really doesn't matter who, who addresses the question. It's just that we've had this happen before. When we talk about signs that have been in existence since the 1980s or 60s or wherever it was, and they don't have the records, who should have the burden of persuasion? The applicant, who wouldn't necessarily know what happened back in 1980 or 65 or 70? Or should it be the city at a time when the records weren't really that great in the past? I kind of favor putting the burden on the city to show that it wasn't in compliance, rather than say, okay, where was your records back in 1980 or 70 or whatever it was?
Unfortunately, all that's been, you know, lost in the sands of time. You're right. And I think that's, it speaks to how much more robust our record-keeping is now. I think the city didn't have those kinds of things in place in years past, but, you know, we have different systems now, so definitely moving forward, we have much better systems.
We actually have quite a thick file on this property, and so staff went through painstakingly every permit record for this property and came across only three permits, one of which was withdrawn. And then there were, there was one in 1982 for the original construction of the base, and then in 1985, there was a modification. And we also have an encroachment permit because this sign is within the city's right-of-way.
Okay.
I had a question for staff, and I just now caught this. On attachment one, item number one, the approved plans are as follows, and it says sign criteria narrative from November 21, 2024. What is that referring to? And, and maybe just while I'm here.
I think it's, it's, there's a middle packet. It's November 21st.
Oh, okay.
That's the description of the project.
Oh, because I, okay, I didn't see a stamp on the, where's the stamp at?
I have one on my third page of the attachment.
All right. I didn't, I didn't see that.
I think it was somewhere in the, the staff narrative too.
All right, okay. I didn't, I didn't, oh, here it is, on the very, very last. Okay, so it's, that is referring to the description of the project document, all those, okay. Thank you, Kristen. All right. I'm going to defer.
That's fine. You guys ready to?
I think I've got it, but.
Are you ready to make a motion? Or do you have further questions?
Well, I just had a question. Well, one thing too, is the wheels. I've always thought this sign looks really awkward with the big open circles in it. I didn't realize, I didn't even actually register to me that those were wheels when I was looking at these signs. Is that an option to reinstate or have something? I'm not trying to make them put it on there, but I just have always kind of thought it looks interesting when you drive by the shape of it, and it makes sense that it's missing something, because in my brain, it was missing something, but I didn't know it.
It's not included in the application, but you could ask if that is something they would be interested in?
I'm not trying to, to force them to. I just, that was, that struck me right now. I just, it didn't even cross my mind until you had said it. I guess my reflection on the project, I noodled through it a lot too and looked at the, the numbers, and it does strike you as a lot of overage at first, but when you look at the fact that it's both sides, it really lowers back down to the allowable amount very quickly. So I guess I don't really have a lot of questions. If we're removing the, I was okay with removing the illuminated massage sign, having them be able to have a sign on the wall, and then the open sign is, I think, a little bit broken right now, but having a nice open sign on there. If it's going to be on the outside and as significant, to make sure it's upkept, but.
Right. And to me, it's important to, I, I was wondering if the commissioners would consider emphasizing that the open sign would be steady lit, not a flashing sign, because, you know, it is part of our regulations, but you see a lot of businesses violating that, and so it just really goes against the, the spirit of that. So I was, I was wondering if we should, since this runs with the land, at this time, you know, take a opportunity to emphasize that we, you know, need the, the steady lit as opposed to a flashing sign, it's, you know, it looks, looks much better. Also, yeah, to have the, the two signs be the aluminum plate style, I, I think that it will make the interest look a little bit better. You have your mic on, Mr. Smith?
It, it's just only if you're interested in the wagon wheels. I've had them in the family for 70 years and owned a few, they wouldn't have lasted that long. I wish I knew of a way to keep them around, you know, where you almost encase them in plastic or something, but they will deteriorate. They have to be constantly maintained.
And, you know, we have to appreciate that, you know, what was there originally, you know, now we have a new owner, they want a slightly different.
It's up to them whether they want to replicate it or not.
So since it's not something that they're proposing, you know, I'm not sure that we need to impose that.
Oh, no.
I, I concur with the chair's suggestion regarding the open sign be a steady burning sign, because that is consistent with the ordinance, right?
Yes.
So I, I mean, there's nothing in here necessarily that says specifically the applicant shall comply with the ordinance, so it would not be inappropriate, I, I think, for the use of, of a lit open sign is permitted so long as the sign is maintained in a constant lit, non-flashing, whatever verbiage you want to use that gets to that. And then does that have an hour of operation as well, like it's got to go off by 11:00 PM or something along those lines?
It just, logically, it would be when it, when they're there.
Probably goes off when they're closed. Okay, well, that makes sense.
I thought about the same thing as you.
Yeah, yeah.
Enforcing, but I think.
That takes care of itself.
Yeah, it does. I agree.
But I think, I don't think it's inappropriate to call that out specifically. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that, support for that. All right. Any, would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I think I got that.
Go ahead, Amy.
All right. I will make a motion that we make the following findings in support of SPR 24-08 as listed in the staff report, numbers one through five on page seven, and that we conditionally approve SPR 24-08 located at 680 Placerville Drive based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report dated January 21, 2025. And then we will be amending the conditions of approval. I put it under number three, that talks about the digital time and temperature sign. We're going to amend number three to state that the open, the open sign shall not flash and be steady lit and be turned off during non-business hours.
I'll second the motion for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
Are you eliminating the digital time and temperature sign, or are you just adding to it?
Adding to it. I just.
Okay. At the, so it'll be a second sentence?
Yes. I had written "and," but it can be a second.
Okay.
So how about just period and say the open sign.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Shall not flash, be steady lit, and turned off during non-business hours. Sound good?
That works for me.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Ms. Hunter, please call the vote.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay, 4-0 approval. Again, this is subject to a 10-day appeal, but we appreciate you coming down here, giving us a complete sign, a master sign plan, and appreciate your time. Good luck. Have a nice evening. Now, moving on, we go to number 11, which is continued items. This is the site plan review 84-01-r and variance 23-04 regarding the property 564 Main Street. And I just want to remind everyone that we have taken some action on this application before, and tonight, we're focused on, only on the master sign plan, since we've already dealt with the other elements of the application itself. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Hunter for the updated staff report.
Thank you. I'll provide some background too. So the project came before the planning commission on December 3, 2024. During this meeting, the planning commission considered site plan review 84-01-r, which included exterior modifications, exterior lighting, outdoor dining, including a shade structure, bar, and picnic tables, and a master sign plan for the restaurant. And they also considered variance 23-04 for reduction in required onsite parking. Following staff's report and public comment, planning commission took the following actions: to approve the exterior modifications, including new front windows, front entry, and exterior string lighting, approve the modified outdoor dining as recommended by staff, approving only four tables, 16 chairs in the rear alley, and requiring the removal of the shade structure, bar, remaining tables and chairs, and landscape planters within the parking lot. Deny the variance application and continue the master sign plan portion of the site plan review request to tonight's meeting. Minutes reflecting this are included as attachment two of staff's memorandum. For some background, the development services department brought the pole sign located on the subject parcel to city council to be declared abandoned on September 10, 2024. The council provided the property and, property owners and business owners a period of 90 days to abate the violation, which would have included installation of signage for an active business operating on the site. As the deadline for the pole sign, which was December 9, 2024, followed the December 3 meeting, the master sign plan portion of the application was continued. Following the deadline, DSD staff verified that abatement had not occurred and informed the property owners and business owners via email and regular mail that the pole sign is abandoned and to be abated by March 9, 2025. In staff's December 3, 2024 report to the commission, staff recommended the modification of the master sign plan to reduce the number of wall signs to two, as outlined in staff's report. The two wall signs would adequately provide advertising to the property. All signs would be of professional quality, utilizing materials, finishes, and trim elements that complement those used in adjacent architecture and site design, and would be logically placed on the building. Of note, the restaurant building has a lineal business frontage along Main Street of approximately 75 feet. Under the general regulations of the sign ordinance, the lineal business frontage allows for an aggregate wall sign area of 117 square feet and an overall aggregate area of 150 square feet. Staff recommends that the planning commission consider the master sign plan and take one of the following actions. One, to conditionally approve the master sign plan, clarifying the scope of the approved sign plan. Two, direct staff to work with the applicant to gather any information missing that's necessary to make a determination in the project. Or three, deny the master sign plan. This concludes staff's report.
Okay. Thank you very much. So want to make sure that I understand that the only two wall signs, the staff recommendation is to not include any wall signs on the west elevation, which are now the painted, the three painted icons that are two by two each, for a total of 12 square feet, I believe, if I'm doing my math right. So just the wall sign on the north and east elevations. Okay. Good. Any other questions?
And just to be clear, the pole sign's no longer in consideration, it's got to be, it's got to be taken down, vacated, and et cetera, et cetera. So we're only dealing with the other elevations. Okay.
So when you take away the, the pole sign, then, let's see. Is it 178 square feet allocated for wall signage, 60 square feet for pole sign, so then that brings us down to 118 square feet for signage, which is just one square foot over, that's, which is allowed by the 75 lineal feet of frontage that they have. So we're definitely within the, what's allowed? Okay. All right. All right. I believe the, the applicant is here in the audience. Would you like to step up to the podium and present the project or emphasize anything to us? I don't know if anyone else has got questions for you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you again.
You. Yes, we, with the loss of the pole sign now, we would be painting over probably the, the painted icons on the building, which are no longer, no longer applicable.
Could you speak into, I'm having a hard time.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, now that the, now if the pole sign is, is, will be removed, then the, the icons that are on the, on the west-facing, on the west-facing side of the building are no longer applicable anyway to the, to the business that will be going in. So we'll be painting over those. So we would additionally request, now that the pole sign is not in consideration, that we have a signage on the west side and the east side, so that we'd be able to see it for oncoming traffic.
Signage on the north side and the east side?
Well, the north, north side is the face of the building, but also we'd like some signage on the east side and the west side, which we had discussed last, last December.
Okay. So under your master sign plan on the west elevation, that is the painted icons that are two by two, the, the three icons.
Right. This was when the pole sign was still being considered.
Mm-hmm.
Part of the signage. So now that the pole sign's gone, we have no west, west-facing signage for that building.
So if I understand your request, then you would like to have some allowance for signage on the west side?
Yes, correct. Yes, please.
Okay. I'm, I'm getting over a cold, so bear with me.
Sure.
I'm kind of, want to make sure I clearly understand what it is you need to have for your business. So that would be on the north, the large wood and vinyl lettering sign, 28 by four. The west elevation, the, the area, since you said you're going to paint over the icons but have an allowance for something on the west side, approximately, approximately the same size, 12 square feet?
That should be ample.
Okay. And then the east elevation sign, 15 by three, wood sign with vinyl lettering?
Correct.
Okay. Good. I understand. Any other questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Yes. The question I wanted to ask is about the pole sign. It's not before us, but the questions have to do with just us being able to learn about consistency and, and about your business considerations. You let it go. Is that something you wanted to do? You wanted to give it up?
We were trying to, to get something on the face of the building. We were, we had somebody lined up to install some signage on, on the pole sign. However, the, the, we couldn't get a, an encroachment permit because of the holiday moratorium.
You couldn't get a what permit?
Unable to do anything.
You couldn't get a what permit?
Encroachment for the, for the lift that would get the, the service people up there.
What kind of sign would you have put up to just mark the spot or what? What was it that you?
Yeah, so we're looking for a temporary signage just to keep the pole sign in consideration for the, for the next tenant, so we didn't have anything in mind as of yet.
I thought the, maybe staff can speak to this, but I thought the condition for the pole sign dealt with, there had to be an operating business, and because there wasn't an operating business, then that negates the pole sign approval. But you're saying that the. But you're saying that the, if I understand this correctly, the, the entity, the party that was interested in, in using it, would have used it, but you couldn't get, you couldn't get a service permit in time?
Yeah, we couldn't get an encroachment.
Would they, I mean, would, would the entity that's, the party that's interested in the business, would they, would they use it? Would they use the poles? Are they going in there and they would use the pole sign?
I'm sure, I'm sure they would, but, you know.
And that's not something we could have worked out with the city, I guess, is my question. And Cleve, I'm looking at you. Is that just pretty much a no? Can't do it? Sorry. And I know this is during the public hearing, and maybe we need to, when we bring it back, we can have the conversation. But I just want to make sure I'm clear on the facts. It sounds like you still have somebody that, yeah, was going to go in there, and they would have used the pole sign, but for whatever reason, couldn't make things happen in time? And you said something about the holiday season.
There was a holiday moratorium in which we couldn't, there were no encroachment permits that could be issued during that period of time. Are you aware of that?
Okay.
For, to get a lift in place to service the sign.
All right.
There was a number of, yeah, a number of things that were going on.
All right, I get it. Thank you for that. I'm sorry for the irregularity of the questioning.
Any other questions for our applicant? You know, it's very clear that the City Council took action on that pole sign, and it's summarized on page 11 of the staff report. You know, and it was a matter of timing that it was declared abandoned in a public nuisance as of December 9th. So, you know, the application did not supersede the resolution that was passed by City Council. So, since the pole sign was not in use, it is a moot point. Was not in use with valid advertising copy by December 9th. So unfortunately, you know, that, that just is a fact of this case. So the, the pole sign, yeah, is out of consideration. And Mr. Morse, do you want to add anything to that? Or, I just think it's very clear. Or, Ms. Hunter, either one of you?
Yes, so staff did review the proposed sign that was proposed for the pole sign. It was a generic bar and restaurant sign. There was no active business license or proposed business taking occupancy. So unfortunately, staff could not approve it. There is an exemption process for the moratorium. It just did not qualify for it.
Okay. So all these things were taken into consideration?
I just wanted to add, on the encroachment permit issue, during the holidays, we do not approve encroachment permits on Main Street due to the businesses. However, we could have found an exception would it have been an approved sign to help them out with that. But based on our ordinance, we determined that it was not an approved sign that would have qualified to allow it to stay. And that's the reason the encroachment permit was.
So since this, this project?
It was a combination of a number of.
It, it didn't meet the definition of, of a use with valid advertising copy? So, since that wasn't met, then there wasn't a possibility of the extending or issuing the encroachment permit?
I just wanted to follow up, because I know of two signs, two pole signs that were faced with the same issue. One was one I had, and then it was, before that, something up on Broadway. And please, the city manager can correct me if I'm, if my memory's off. But this, but what the council did for consistency is that you either had a business in place, which in your case, you, you don't have at this time, or you put up a blank sign, was my understanding, for both the one on Broadway and for the one on Placerville, actually be Green Valley Road. And, and so that was what was done. So it would be a blank sign for six months, allowing a business, or it could have been, you know, any name put up there, like, you know, Smith Plaza. That was what was done for two other cases. Were you given that option of making it blank?
No, we were not.
Okay. So, that would be the consistency. Please.
If staff could clarify that for the Green Valley property, it was never, there was never a resolution giving that timeline. The City Council gave 180 days for your property to be sold and for the next property owner to then utilize the sign.
So, but there was a six-month period, right?
For Broadway, there are multiple tenants, and so it could be a center. This is one restaurant, and so that was not an option.
That's the difference, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone in the audience care to comment on the project? Please step up to the podium, if you would. Give us your name. Good evening.
Good evening. Ruth Carter, City of Placerville. And I just wanted to highlight, you know, my blood is boiling over this, I'm not going to lie. The city needs to take a really hard look at their pole sign ordinance in particular. These poor people, they don't have a tenant right now. I don't know how you can force them to put up a sign. Fine, if they have to put up a blank sign, maybe they get to put up a "for rent" sign. There has to be a compromise in there. It makes it expensive and onerous for the building owners. And it's just more hoops. They're, they're here, you know, trying to ask for more signage when they've already gone through the process. And it's, it's wasting your time, their time, staff's time. And so, there, there really needs to be a harder look at this pole sign ordinance in particular, because it's really making it very difficult for building owners in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on the proposal? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the commission.
Could I just mention it in response to what the members of the public mentioned? I'd forgotten about Stancil Motors. Stancil had the lot that was, where the, right now, it's a tire company. But before the tire company was there, Stancil's big pole sign simply said "for lease." And "for lease" was deemed acceptable for that pole sign. So, the consistency would be it was one business. This is a restaurant, one business. The tire shop was one business. But before they had the tenant, the, the pole sign, for the longest time, a year or two, simply said "for lease", and that was deemed permitted. So, there is an issue about consistency.
Well, I don't know about the timing of when it was Stancil's in that pole sign versus when the city updated their pole sign ordinance. But, yeah, I, you know, we do have that in force now. So, moving forward, hopefully, we can apply the ordinance consistently to all the businesses. Did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I want to noodle this just a little bit. So, if I could direct my question to Cleve. I'll ask the, what'll probably get us a short answer first, and I'll ask a second question. We'll get a little bit longer answer. The short, what I expect will be a short answer to the question is, is there anything we can do about this at this point?
No, it's, the council took action that is beyond that.
Okay, so it's really beyond us. And I concur with the comment that was made that we do, the city needs to look at it. It's actually outside of our hands at this point. It's unfortunate. Then, longer answer, at least for my edification. A business has, has a legal pole sign, which they did as long as they had the business. How much time, it was, it must be in, in ordinance somewhere? How much time after a tenant vacates? So you have a business, boom, with a tenant, and they're doing their business. Tenant leaves. How much time do you have to get a new tenant and you can still keep the use of that pole sign? You don't lose it. What's the timeframe on that?
180 days, right, Kristen?
You have 180 days? Is there any?
And so it's not only if the tenant leaves, but it's if copy is removed from the sign and it is blank.
Okay.
And our code actually references the California Business and Professions Code, which is more strict when it comes to what they consider abandoned signs. We give more time. So the California Business and Professions Code gives 90 days.
Okay, and then there's, and there's no extension procedure on that, or?
We, when we, when we take an application to the council, that's the process.
Okay, and the council has discretion, then, to decide if they're to extend it. And that's going to be based upon whatever the history is at that particular time for that particular business, I assume. Okay, all right. Well, it's unfortunate, I agree, it's unfortunate for the applicant, it's unfortunate.
Mr. Smith, you had a comment about that?
Yes, just another, you brought to mind, another property years ago during the same time period was, a city council member had property, and that sign, that pole sign down on Lower Main Street was, you know, like a couple, more than a year. So it was more than 180 days. And, and the Stancil Motors was up there for years. It wasn't, it wasn't 180 days. It was up there for two or three years.
Which might be the reason the city updated their pole sign code.
Well, there wasn't, it was the same code. The code's been the same.
The code's been, the city's updated its code since, right?
I believe so. I believe, it depends on what year, because I, I don't know that timeframe.
Unfortunately, I think we're going to get out of rabbit hole.
The city's sign ordinance was last updated in 2001.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mr. Friend. We are kind of getting wrapped around the axle of a point that's actually moot.
We can't, we can't.
The pole sign is not really a part of our consideration tonight. So I'd like to draw us back here to, you know, the reason I asked and confirmed about the signage on the west, and I think our applicant, you know, underscored that, especially with the loss of the pole sign, there, there is no signage then on the west side of the building. And I'm a little more sympathetic to that. Right now, it's the painted icons, and it's only 12 square feet. You know, I realize that's increasing their signage, but when you think about the site, it is constrained. You know, the very large sign on the front, I think is visible from Highway 50, you know, if, if you're looking for it. But, you know, I appreciate that they need to draw people's attention to, you know, the west side as well as to the east side. So I was wondering if we could consider amending the allowed square footage to keep that. You know, he indicated he's going to paint over it now because it's no longer, you know, the old seafood. We don't know what's going to go in there. But since this runs with the land, the next tenant may very well, you know, benefit from having some modest amount of signage on the west side. Other than that, you know, the, the sign plan, I think we, there's an existing, very large one on the north, and then allowance for new signage on the east. What about adding or allowing that west elevation? What do you?
I have, I have a question, because I think, I just want some clarification. They're asking for 238 square feet, and then minus 60 is the 178 that's remaining, right?
178.
Because you're subtracting 60 from the 178, but my interpretation is that subtract 60 from 230.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe they're at 178. But then, it, with the existing, but they're going to take out the three.
Yes.
So whatever that math is. But there, there was also, I know I saw it in the report. Kristen, help me, I know you'll be able to go right to it. There, in terms of our calculation, if you got so much frontage, you get so many square feet. But then, it, there was something in here, and it caught my eye, it said, if you, some properties have more than one frontage, right? Or two frontages. And, and I was trying to envision what that looked like, and I can't remember where in the report it was. But isn't, if, if people are going, you know, east and west on Main Street, and they're seeing those, isn't that considered also frontage?
No, frontage is only that portion of the building parallel to Main Street.
The parallels, so, but, but in the staff report, it says, some properties can have more than one frontage. Does that mean they're, they're between two streets? That's the way that would have to work?
Yes, so at the corner of Placerville Drive and Cold Springs, there is a property that then would.
Okay, got you. I, I was looking for an easy out, but.
That ties in specifically with wall signs, because our codes say, under the general regulations, one wall sign and one projecting sign, or one wall sign and one ground sign. And so, the two frontages allows two wall signs in addition to, say, a projecting sign.
Okay. Going back to the chair's question, as, as to sentiment. My sentiment is, I would like to help them out. As long as we, we have to be careful about not making too much of an exception, right? I mean, we, we're, we're pretty big on trying to be consistent and hold everybody to the same standard. You know, we make some allowances, so it'd be how we crafted it. So, right now, I have 178, and we have two-by-two, which is four, minus 12, right?
Well, actually, let's, let's look at Table 1. The north front elevation, 28 by 4, is 112 square feet.
Okay.
We're not allowing the next one, which says it's illuminated sign on canopy. The next one that I'm asking us to consideration, consider is the west elevation of the 12 square feet.
So we have 45.
And then, the next one is the east elevation, 15 by 3, 45 square feet. Now, I'm doing my math here, and again, I'm recovering from a cold, but I'm coming up with 169.
That's what I got, and I use my phone calculator, so.
Well, phones, you know, if I agree with this.
I wanted to make sure.
So 169.
Is only 19 feet over the 150 allowable aggregate.
Exactly. So I think we're within a reasonable, you know, ballpark. And, and with, under master sign plan, you know, that's certainly allowable to go over what's, would normally be allowed based on just the frontage. And, you know, given the kind of constraints, the narrowness of the road, the, you know, there is that parking lot to the east as well as the one that they own to the west, so, anyway.
I just want to make sure I understand, so I want to ask.
We have, yeah, 169 of wall signs.
The question, the question I wanted to ask you is, okay, you're not talking about three two by two signs, you're talking about, we're going to give them, you're saying just give them the 12, 12 square feet.
Right, because-
And then they can do with it whatever they want.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we don't have to say, yeah, that it has to be three, two by two, just 12 square feet, the total that was in, originally in Table 1.
And that's 169.
And that totals up 169.
Okay. Yeah, I would support that.
Yeah, that's kind of where I landed, I, this one I noodled through a lot, and I actually did have Kristin clarify the aggregate allowable, and did a lot of the different calculations and movement, and I landed where I think that with the 169, they're really close to the allowable, they're getting rid of the pole signs, I don't think it's obnoxious, I think it's helpful for their location, and the sign on the front, the cabinet is much bigger than the print, too, so it kind of, you know, it seems bigger than it is, you know what I mean? So I think that the signage is appropriate to the size and the shape of the building, and it also helps with their visibility on Main Street, so.
Okay.
At the 169, I thought we were very close to their allowable, and that they were appropriate.
Okay, and before we go much further, I just wanted to point it out to the commissioners. I spoke with Ms. Hunter earlier today about the recommended planning commission action, and what we have before us is, you know, the complete copy of the staff report, but for tonight, our review is limited to the master sign plan. So I want to make sure that we're clear in whatever action we take, that we perhaps even change that statement one, make the following findings in sport of the site plan review, master sign plan. Points 1 and 2 are discussed sequo, and again, is our statement about staff's review. Then, strike point 3, since that talks to parking and the other, exterior lighting, the other things that we dealt with previously.
Madam Chair-
Strike 3 and 4.
Along these lines, but maybe more simply, to simply acknowledge that we've already made these findings in prior action, we don't have to make any changes, but just, we just acknowledge it tonight, that we, we already made these findings, and that in addition, and now we're going to approve the master sign plaque, package, under the findings that we already found previously. I don't think we have to change them or do anything.
Ms. Hunter-
We can simply accept-
I would recommend, I would recommend you make findings that you find that the sign-
Specific to the sign package?
Yeah.
We don't have to, but we don't have to redo any of the findings we found, or everything else that we already did.
We don't need to strike those from a motion that we make tonight.
You would be crafting a motion tonight. I provided the staff report and the recommended conditions from the previous meeting, just to carry it over, because this was a continued item. It does show staff's recommended conditions and findings at the time when the master sign plan was before you at first.
Yeah.
So you can amend what's there to fit the master sign plan.
Or it's not, wouldn't be wrong to go ahead and include everything that's listed. I'm trying to figure out what's the most appropriate.
Since we conditionally approved everything, as it says in the existing staff report, we've already done that, we've already gone through the findings to support that.
Yes, and it's past its appeal period, so no, you wouldn't want to reopen any of them.
Right, so we do need to trim tonight what our motion is and what our findings are.
Yeah, and I think it could be as simple as approving the master sign package with a finding that the requested signs, the sign footage requested by the applicant, it deviates only slightly from what is specific in ordinance, and that we find that with the loss of the pole sign, a small amount of additional signage on the west elevation would be warranted. I think we could go something quite as simple as that.
You do have to make two findings, they're required in our ordinance, and staff had drafted findings 5 and 6 to meet that.
Where am I not, why am I not seeing those?
On page 12 of your staff report.
Page 13.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it just, it has to-
The two, one and two.
Yeah.
Similar language, finding that it's, do you want me to design quality, you know?
Yep, I do.
And then 5, 6, and 7.
And 4.
Okay, 4, so just eliminate number 3, 4, 5, 6.
That can just be trimmed, too, I think. Let me give it a whirl, and if it, if it's not appropriate, then I will amend it.
Knock it out of the park.
All right, all right.
Well, here's, here's a-
Yes, go ahead.
One thing I wanted to ask, maybe the staff can help me out, because it's been a while since I've read this stuff, but I know that you just described how they applied for the use of the pole sign, and they did meet the deadline, but did you mention in your report anything about them seeking to do exactly what they promised they would do, but they couldn't get the encroachment permit to actually do it? Is that mentioned in here?
I believe there's a brief summary of it in the memorandum that was distributed, dated tonight's date.
Yeah, I saw that.
Which part?
The memorandum.
Yeah.
It's a very brief summary.
This one, one single page, today's.
And the pole sign is not a pole, so there's just a brief summary.
And it mentions that they did seek to get the encroachment permit, could-
No, I didn't go into that much detail.
Right here.
Okay.
Under the discussion section of the memo from, for January 21st.
Okay.
Right.
Because I do see that's an intervening thing, in that they did exactly what, they took steps to do exactly what they agreed to do, what the council directed they did, but the intervening thing is that the city would not issue the encroachment permit to allow them to actually carry it out. That's, that's what's going on.
There was a few, there was a little more to it than that, and it's not pertinent to tonight, you're just looking at the remaining signage requests, not including the pole sign.
Yeah, I think, I think to your point, a finding that would support our deviating from the strict adherence to ordinance is that the applicant, on the one hand, attempted to meet the requirements to retain the pole sign, but they were unable to do so, and they, frankly, they missed the deadline. At the end of the day, that's it. It's not that the city, you know, was, took unwarranted action, for lack of a better term, the deadline was simply missed. The applicant made an attempt, but was unable, through a variety of circumstances, holiday and everything else, weren't able to make it, so they lost the privilege, you know, there's a term for it, I can't come up with it, but I think, I think I understand what you're talking about, it actually supports a finding.
I think it's important, too, that staff is aware, it's not like this was the first time that they've heard of this.
Yeah.
Encroachment permit, so if, if staff was like, what, we had no idea that that was the reason behind this not happening, then I would be a little bit, I'm very sympathetic to the applicant, don't get me wrong, I'm sad that they have to lose the pole, but as you said, it's not relevant here, and two, staff has clarified for us that they were aware of the attempt, it wasn't, it didn't happen.
I'm sorry, who was aware of the attempt?
Staff, the city.
They were aware of the attempt, but they also were of the intervening factor that the city council never contemplated.
But, but he clarified that they looked at it, it wasn't appropriate to issue an emergency encroachment permit for it, right? So it was moot, like I said, if they came today and had never heard that they had tried to get this permit and were blocked by the moratorium, then I'd be like, okay, well, let's reexamine that, but the city was aware during the moratorium, looked at the application for it, and said this doesn't qualify for an emergency permit, and that's why it wasn't approved.
Yep.
So if tonight they said, we had no idea they came for a permit and tried really hard to get it, then I'd be more sympathetic, not sympathetic, but I'd be more understanding of maybe going after, but they're aware, it didn't qualify, they said that tonight, and it's kind of over, unfortunately. With that, I'll try to make a motion.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, great. So, I would like to make a motion of the following findings in support, I'm going to read them, just so we can be clear on what it is. The, in support of site plan review, 84-01-R, the master sign plan, that the project request is exempt from environmental review, I'm sorry, that number 1 and 2 on the staff report, number 3, that the project is amended by staff and as conditioned is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of section, of zoning ordinance, section 10-4-17 sign regulations.
So are you, I would like to delete-
You want to just delete the whole number 3?
Yes, that's, I, since we have covered all of that.
Got it. Eliminate number 3, and then include-
Oh, I'm sorry, I just read that the last sign says section 10-4-17 sign regulations, so project is amended by staff, as condition is consistent, maybe we should just line out everything until-
That's what I-
-that very last.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'd intended to do, so bear with me here.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So, numbers 1 and 2 is listed in the staff report, number 3, eliminate the wording referencing the other ones, so the project is amended by staff and as conditioned is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance, section 10-4-17 sign regulations, and that 4, 5, 6, and 7 is listed on page 13. And, conditionally approve SPR 84-01-R, master sign plan, as amended by staff, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval, included in attachment 1 of the staff report, dated December 3, 2024. I think.
Okay, and then looking at the-
You're going to want to-
I'll second it for purpose of discussion, and we can make amendments.
Did you want to address any changes in the conditions of approval?
Staff had a question.
In your motion?
Yeah, I was just, you're going to want to address the conditions of approval, I seem to be missing.
By adding the 12 square feet, specifically adding the 12.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, I'm used to it being a separate page, yes. Okay, and so to amend the conditions of approval, to add 12 square, to eliminate one pole sign with 60 square feet of sign area, and the note associated with it, and to add 12 square feet of signage, do I need to notify that it's on the western elevation?
I would.
Okay, on the western elevation.
And then, we wouldn't include, so just leave it at that, as opposed to excluding what's here in the old staff report.
Okay, great. Great, so the conditions of approval as amended, eliminating the pole sign reference and incorporating the 12 square feet of sign approval on the western elevation.
And then the other conditions of approval, on the back, expiration, runs with the land, revisions.
If staff could, I would-
So 6 through 11?
Recommend that for 1, it be approval of SPR 84-01-R, master sign plan, to approve the master sign plan for the restaurant, including 12 square feet of signage on the western elevation, 45 square feet on the western, oh, the eastern, apologies, and then the 112 square feet on the front, north elevation, and then, you know, the approval is based on the analysis, then for the approved plans, it would be the master sign package, dated July 22, 2024, and then I would include condition 2 and 3, and then the standard.
Then the standard 6 through 11 also applies. Okay. Essentially, just eliminating 4 and 5.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Sorry to interrupt, I just-
No, it, the-
-work through it, since it's-
My motions keep getting messier and messier, it feels. Okay, so it's got, so we will, the conditions of approval as amended, and I'm sorry, did you say to add on the square footage on number 1, or it's clearly highlighted in number 2?
I would, I would specify it-
Okay.
-under approval.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so the approval of the master sign, that amend number 1 to add approval of the master sign plan for the restaurant, including 112 square feet on the front of the building, 1 45 square foot wood with vinyl lettering wall sign on the eastern side of the building, and 12 square feet of signage on the western elevation of the building. Eliminate number 3 in condition number 2, eliminate number 4 and 5 on the conditions, and the rest is good. Right? Okay.
I accept the amendment is issued.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
No.
Okay. Please call the roll, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Friend?
Yes.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
So, it's 3 to 1, the, you have the approval for the master sign package, it is subject to a 10-day appeal. Thank you very much, once again, for coming down and talking with us, and we hope that something new goes in there in short order, good luck with all of that, and I appreciate that so much. Have a good evening. Okay. Well, thanks, everybody, for working through that and getting that master sign plan crafted. We'll move on to number 12, new business, of which we have none, then 13 is matters from commissioners and staff, we'll go 13.1 for staff to update us on status of upcoming meetings and so on.
The next meeting is scheduled for February 4th.
That's all?
I think there'd be a big announcement.
There should be a big announcement right about now.
Um, there are, I believe, I'll let city manager clarify, but I believe the applications for planning commission are now available online.
Oh, well, that, too, but we have a new, at least for me, it's the first time-
Right, so, welcome, Mr. Cahill. Yes, I was remiss, we got to work right away without introducing you.
Carl Cahill is our interim director of development services, so.
All right, well, just real quick, I am a resident of Cameron Park, I'm here on an interim basis as the development services director. I've, I've been a planning director as part of my career, I've also been a city manager, I retired, and now I serve in interim capacities for cities in the planning manager role, and I'm here for a few months, I'm going to also help Cleve find a permanent replacement for the development service director, and I'm honored to be here, this is an awesome little town, and I was telling Commissioner Lepper that just, it's not just the appearance, it's so beautiful, the downtown, but it's, it's the aromas remind me so much of North Beach in San Francisco, so it just brings back memories, so I'm really glad to be here and I hope I can make a positive contribution in the next few months. Thank you.
We can't keep you, why? And we can't keep you, why?
It's Per's rules, limited.
Well, we really look forward to working with you, thank you very much, and I apologize for not introducing you at the beginning of the meeting, gee, we just haven't had an interim development services director here before, so don't have a precedent.
We're glad to have you, thank you.
So, we'll move on to planning commission matters. Now, Ms. Hunter, we, at our last meeting, we talked about the historic district review issue, and do you, is there still room on our agenda for us to have, to continue our discussion on that?
Yes, it was, you directed it to be on the February 4th meeting, and yes, it will, you have, you'll have space to-
So, I just want to remind the other commissioners that if there is something that you would like to present for us to take under consideration now, at our last meeting, we were, we agreed to focus on what was recommendation number 4 from the city council, to start looking at perhaps some guidelines, and so please submit anything for consideration to staff by, it's the 27th, correct? So that it can be, that's what my notes show from last time, but whatever the date, so that it can be included in the agenda packet, and for both our review, but also for review by the public, so that they can see what it is you're considering, and if they would like to, they can submit comments or come down here and talk to us during that, when we get to that business on the 4th. So you need it by the, close the business on the 27th, and, you know, I asked that-
If more time is needed, just please be in communication with me, because we can hold on distributing the packets if it's just a day or a couple hours, so just, if you do want something included, please just reach out.
Okay, thank you for that allowance, too. You know, when we get things night of, it's one thing for us to read it up here on the dais, but really, we don't want to exclude the public from them having a chance to review it and think about it, and if they want to comment on it, then they can do so, so that's why I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Anyone else have something they wanted to talk about, planning commission matters?
No, just to say that I did do some research on the historic items, and I'll be submitting to Kristin some links that I've come up with, and some documents that I think can help guide us to sort of make them to Placerville rather than recreate everything, and I did quite a bit of research on historic standards as well, specifically came up with the fact that the Secretary of Interior came out with their new, in April of 2024, their sustainability ones, that I really want to roll around and dig into more, because I think that will really speak to a lot of our stuff, but also some city examples, you know, some really large ones, Pasadena has 190-page historic guidelines, but the city of LA has a 17-page one that I found a lot more palatable for us, and then there's a Riverside one in the middle of 88 pages, so as promised, I've started rolling around in this and kind of seeing where it is.
Did you have an opportunity to look at the sustainability version?
Not in depth, I did, they're a little bit more succinct than the larger, older ones, but they do address the issues that we're worried about.
Okay, so, all right, great, well, I look forward to hearing that, that's fantastic.
Yeah, I thought it would be nicer to start with the updated ones, so it was lucky that they came out last year rather than next year, and we work on old ones, and then they roll out all these sustainability ones, so, and the other thing I wanted to say was that, I believe a member of the public had mentioned it last time, but the Office of Historic Preservation, yeah, they do really help with that, and I think it would be wise to reach out to them to see what tools they have, but I wasn't sure who that is, so. Basically, I wanted to be, be able to be helpful, to reach out to them, but I'm obviously not going to overstep my boundaries as a planning commissioner, so I just wanted to put out there that I thought that would be nice to at least know what they could offer us, if they can offer us something, so if it's way too advanced and high level for us, or if it actually could be useful, I thought that was a good place to start, and then we can kind of go from there.
Fantastic, we really appreciate you doing that legwork on our behalf, I look forward to seeing what you've discovered, and hopefully I can add to it in a positive way. Anything else?
Yes, this is my concern, is that we had a workshop that was combined with other matters related to the subject of Airbnb, the short-term rentals, and we got a lot of public interest, there were about four or five people, just more than usual, but when you, when you combined it with these other things, we didn't really give a chance for a lot of attention to it, and, and I can tell you that six years ago, right after the Paradise Fire on that side of the dais, my suggestion had to do with revising building codes to provide protection against fire to the extent possible, and I know that when we had this special committee, one of the things that we pointed out to our colleagues is that there are certain building materials that are now available to make them more fire resistant. One sign is actually fire resistant, another kind is actually fireproof, they look like the real thing, so we, and that's two years ago, we could have done that, so you need to make the hearings very specific, not whether some other county has 190 pages of whatever, but the two subjects that keep coming up over and over, that I can know of for umpteen years now, a dozen years, is double-pane windows and fire-resistant materials. materials. If you make it simple, then you're going to be able to get some focus, and learn something about those particular items. Right now, in Southern California, people are really upset because people knew about things that could be done, didn't do them, and now, we will, in the future, be paying billions and billions of dollars. So, why are, you know, there's, with the presence of fire around, we could certainly look at what kind of siding could be looked at. And, and I, I remember all kinds of dates last year where we didn't meet, I don't know if that's, without going back to look at each one, whether that's simply because you ran out of time, there wasn't enough business, or whatever, but there were a number of, of meetings that we didn't have, that, that could have been used for a workshop.
Well, we certainly need to be, and I don't think we are in conflict with any of the updated building codes regarding fire resiliency, but that would be a good thing to state clearly in any kind of guidelines that we develop and move forward with, and present to city council.
And I just, I just have to, to say that this is where I get really confused, and I'm looking forward to the discussion, because we, you know, on, on one extreme, we have the like-for-like camp, right? It's like, wherever possible, you have to replace like with like, and that, that's one of the reasons that the vinyl windows was such a big deal. You, looking from the street, they look exactly like the original authentic materials, it's only when you go up to them, you say, "Oh, I guess it's vinyl," but, but it doesn't meet the standard of like-for-like, right? And so, I don't, I'm not sure how we're going to deal with the siding, so, I mean, I don't want to get into it at this point.
Yeah, sure.
It's where I'm confused, though, I look forward to it, maybe the sustainability document will help us out with that, because I think, that's always been an important issue, is like, okay, and then the energy calculations in addition to that, right? I mean, how, how do we, how do we balance all that, it's always been the struggle, so I look forward to it.
May I suggest we all take a look at those new standards then before the next meeting, because I'd like to talk about more specifics, rather than high level or ideas, because if, if you want to have those standards, then like, write them up, or, or point us to something, not, it doesn't have to be a workshop, it doesn't have to be a million people's input, it can be, here's a draft, that's what I'm starting to try to do, okay, what can I have that's tangible, and that can move us along? And so, I just want to be aware that if, if you have those ideas, and you want that product, then produce it, you know, like, if-
I'll move that.
If you want to go and see, if you want fire siding, then produce it, I, you know, that's what I'm doing right now, I'm going online, I'm actually-
I think this is our, our great opportunity.
Doing things, yeah, yeah.
We are, you know, still under the existing ordinance, and what, this is our opportunity to develop clear guidelines that, that any planning commission can use as we move forward. And then there are other aspects that are up for consideration, review, but we're taking, this is our first step, is to look at that recommendation for, develop those guidelines that we can then implement for, as soon as they're approved, for the next application that comes through the door. Okay, thank you, everybody, look forward to that discussion in a couple of weeks, it's 7:37, and we are adjourned until the 4th of February.
When you talk to me, I should put the microphone to you, Kristen.